Good evening, everyone. My name is Mayor Ted Betancourt and tonight is the regular school committee meeting at the Higgins Middle School today being May 22nd, 2018. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and it's also being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off with a moment of silence. And the PBD school community, the city of PBD has had a couple of heartbreaking tragic losses in our community. The first being Eileen Bresnahan, who has been our longtime serving Director of Busing and Transportation, recently passed away at too early of an age, and I'd like you to keep her family in your thoughts during our moment of silence. And also, I'd like to ask you to keep in your thoughts Molly, Jack, and Reed Foster, who had the heartbreaking loss of their daughter and sister Mackenzie. I'd ask you to keep those. If everybody could just please stand for a moment of silence. And now, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Levine, who is going to introduce two of our wonderful, amazing students from the West Elementary School. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fifth grader Joshua Darling is a role model student who enjoys reading and writing. He is currently on his third Hunger Games novel. Joshua enjoys playing basketball as an extracurricular activity, and he plays for the PBA, the Y, and of course, the West Wildcats. Joshua was also a clarinet soloist in the winter fifth grade instrumental concert. Welcome, Joshua. How many of you would like to have his hair? Yeah. Fifth grader Kamra Zoot Carr is an inspirational student. She does everything with her best effort. On the basketball court, she is a fast athlete, and in the classroom, she always wants to challenge herself to know more. She is a student who is caring and motivates others to want to be the best that they can be. Welcome, Kamra Zoot. Would I watch the public hearing, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. And thank you, parents. We much appreciate you being here. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Nick Cola, who is the principal of the West School and is here this evening to support the children. Thank you.
So now, we will go to the public hearing on the 2019 fiscal year school department budget. And before we go to Dr. Levine for his report and open it up for any public hearing, I did want to make a few comments. I've been concerned that in the reporting of the newspapers, and I just want to make sure it's very clear where our school budget stands, because I think it was misleading, the newspaper articles, and particularly the headlines stating that we are cutting our school budget by $6.4 million. That is not true. It's actually furthest from the truth. Last year's budget was $71,894,793. This year, it's being proposed at $73,710,393. So it's an increase of $1,815,000, which is almost 3 percent. Last year, we increased the budget 1.6 million. The way it was reported, I thought was misleading. We still have the same amount, but because of increased costs, specifically a 9.9 percent increase in health insurance, our collective bargaining obligations, steps and lanes, and the 2 percent raise, which I think our teachers more than deserve, because of those cost increases in special education, transportation, and some other costs, we've had to reallocate that money, that $6.4 million. So certainly, we are not cutting $6.4 million from our budget. That would never happen. However, we've added 1.8 million, but still, because of those additional costs, we've had to work hard to try to figure out the best way to utilize that money in light of some of these difficult increases. And it's certainly been school-wide. Just to give everybody a perspective, what we've been wrestling with on the city end, and we're close to wrapping up our budget, we had, I think many of you are familiar with, we had our Coolidge Water Treatment Plant had a fire, and it burned to the ground and became a total loss. Well, the city of PBD, we have, I think, among the very lowest water and sewer rates in the state, but we are unable to produce water at the Coolidge Water Treatment Plant, which takes about 70 percent of the city, addresses our water needs. We've had to, in the meantime, over the past year, a little over a year, we've had to take our water from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA, and it's come at a significant cost. We are looking at over $2.5 million that we're going to have to pay to the MWRA sometime this summer, and that is a, that's certainly a big number, and it was not budgeted for, obviously, last year, being unaware of the fire. So that's a bill that has to be paid. And just to give you some perspective as to how it impacts your tax dollars, every million-dollar increase to the budget is about $40 an increase to your tax rate. Just to kind of, that's the basic number. So a 2.5 million dollar increase hurts. Hurts us quite a bit. And it's been disappointing, because we've met with state officials to try to see if we could get some assistance. Towns nearby, a big town next door that begins with the letter L, just got $19 million on a very low interest rate to help them out of their budget needs. City of PBD, we have this, which was certainly a, something we weren't expecting or planned for, and we sought to pay off that loan, or get a loan from a local lender, pay off that 2.5 million, maybe over five years, with some interest, and we were denied that request. And that went to the highest levels in Massachusetts, which was kind of frustrating, that we couldn't get that assistance. And I feel like sometimes we're punished, because, you know, we are, financially, we handle our money, I think, pretty well compared to other cities and towns. But certainly, all of our departments, because of that additional 2.5, because of the 9.9 percent increase within health insurance, which runs about $2 million to the city, our collective bargaining obligations, and I do believe that our teachers and our police officers and our firefighters deserve a cost of living raise, which is 2 percent, that's been collectively bargained, but also increases to our retirement, increases to our water and sewer. So that's what's kind of put some stress on us this year, and that 2.5 put even more stress on us this year than it has in years past. So certainly, it's made it very difficult for all of our city budgets, each police, fire, our public safety, our DPW, our library. We've all kind of had to tighten our belts. Where I don't like to take a step back is in education. And although we've had to make some difficult choices, some difficult cuts today, it's important for me that we continue to move forward. I have three children in our school system right now. I'm going to have another one coming up in a few years. It's important for me to make sure that our city is moving forward as best we can, and that we try to as best we can to meet the needs of our students, but also recognizing that there are tax ramifications and things that we can't prepare for, like with this recent fire. I do think we've made some great investments over the last few years in our school system, most notably the building where I'm standing. I can without question say we have the best middle school in the state of Massachusetts. $92 million, it's the biggest investment we've ever made in our community, and that's something I'm very proud of. We've made major investments at our high school, redoing the cafeteria, the athletic fields, the auditorium, and we've had projects at the McCarthy School, Burke School, and the Welch School in recent years. A thing I'm very proud of, that we've worked together on, has been our investment in technology. This year, and I don't know if there's any other school systems that I can think of outside of Burlington, which is usually, Burlington is very advanced, we will have every student from sixth to 12th grade will have their own Chromebook. It's our one-to-one initiative. I would put that up against any city or town in their school system. That's something that we've worked hard for, we've budgeted for. It was a big investment on our part, but we felt that needed to be done. Right now, what we're working on, and it's very difficult to talk about, and I can't get into specifics with you, but we are going to be making a major investment in school security. Now, I am not putting that in this budget. I'm putting that through our capital investment, so you will not see anything in this budget about school security. That is going to the city council. I think within the next couple of weeks, we're doing our capital along with our budget, but there is going to be significant money spent on school security at all of our schools. Doors, locks, cameras. We've added an additional police officer at the high school, and also some infrastructure work to some of our school buildings to make sure that they're a bit more secure. That is going to be taking place, but that is not in this budget, that is going to be going through capital. We try to use the capital at times to assist with our school needs. Most recently, last year, when we went to our capital request, we put forward our whole new science curriculum, which is about $550,000. Typically, that would be put in our school budget, but we made a decision to put that into capital to kind of allow for more flexibility to invest in our schools. So we put that on the city side, but it was a $550,000 investment. We went with the FOS program, which I think is paying major dividends going forward, and that's a K through 10 program. And I'm very happy about that. We're also looking next into social studies, which is, I know, a curriculum that we're examining now. So, difficult budget, as always. I feel like that's something every year that has to be said, but this year, because of the fire, it put even more stress on all of us. So I did want to make those opening comments. Very difficult. I'm very proud to work with the men and women on this board, because it is difficult and challenging, and there's a lot of work and a lot of care goes into it. All of us here either went to the school system, or all have kids in the school system now. And I think all of us care deeply for the education of our community, and we're trying as best we can to make it work for all of us. But believe me, we care for your kids, and I, again, to go back, I was disappointed in how it was portrayed in the newspaper. If you take the headline, "We're Cutting $6.4 Million," and again, that will never, ever, ever happen going forward. Certainly, that is, that would never happen. So I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Levine. I know he has a couple of statements to make, and then I wanted to open it up for the public hearing, and I appreciate everyone just allowing me those few minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the citizenry of PBD how supportive the school committee and past school committees that I've been around have been for the school department over the past few years. We opened a health clinic at PBD High School. We could not have done it without the support of the mayor and the school committee. This health clinic has two therapists for mental health issues for our students and a drug intervention counselor. I believe that we're the only high school that I know of that has an actual full-time drug intervention counselor on site. That was done with the funds and with the support of this school committee and this The school committee also committed itself a couple of years ago to making certain that every single school in the school district had an adjustment counselor. That was not the case when I first came here. As a matter of fact, in most cases, the schools were sharing adjustment counselors. Now we have an adjustment counselor, full-time, in every building. That is also directed and targeted for the mental health of our students. Some of the areas of reduction, I want to explain to you, and I'll choose which ones that I want to talk about, and then anybody that wants to talk about anything else that's on the sheet, I can explain, hopefully. This last sheet of reductions is the fourth iteration of the reductions. This doesn't just happen. This happens after multiple meetings. I begin with my very strong management team at Central Office. We build a budget the way that we think we're going to need to build a budget and still be able to move forward. It then spreads to the principals, who are very important in the discussion of budgeting and what their priorities are. I put together a first iteration of a budget with the reductions that we knew we would have to make, bring it to the school committee and the mayor, and they give me instructions as to what it is their priorities are, and to please go back and make sure that their priorities are met. So for example, I know that classroom teachers are a huge concern in this audience and in the community. The original number that I floated was 12 teachers to reduce. We have stayed with 10. Every single one of these teaching positions will either be retirements or non-renewals. There will not be one face that we want to keep in the school system who will lose a job. We have made that commitment. We have made that promise. The reductions in the high school, there are five, plus a guidance counselor, are due to numbers. When I came here in 2011, we had 1,850 students at the high school. Today, we will open, we probably open in September with fewer than 1,400. So by common sense, we had to reduce teachers over a period of time to reflect the lower numbers. There will not be one program that is disbanded because of the reduction in positions. There are school systems, for example, that cut foreign languages. There are school systems that cut math offerings. There are school systems that cut social studies electives. We will not be doing that. We will be servicing the kids that are coming to the high school, even with the reduced number of teaching positions. At the elementary level, there will be some slight impact on class sizes. I went through every class size that we project at the elementary school with the school committee this evening, every class in every building. I first, this afternoon, made sure that my numbers were correct by calling and speaking with every principal. No one likes to reduce positions, especially me. But over the past four years that I've been here, we have added probably 25 positions in the school system with the support and the funding of the school committee. Every time we needed a class size split because of two high class sizes, particularly K1 and 2, we split it. Last year, for example, at the McCarthy School, there was no room to split a class. I went down and spoke with the principal. We did something that we didn't want to do, but we took half the library, built a classroom in order to split a kindergarten class that was just too high. The school committee has supported those kinds of moves all through the four years that I've been here. So yes, this is a reduction of positions, but over the past four years, we are still to the good with probably 10 to 15 positions that we've added. I wanted to talk about custodians. The original number was five. In the first iteration of this budget, we are now down to one reduction of custodians, and that custodian position is not presently filled, so it will simply be by attrition. The original number of the library paraprofessionals was totally reducing them to zero. We have been able to put back half of the library parahours, so that every library paro will still have their hours, but they will be reduced as opposed to eliminated. Paraprofessionals, the original iteration of the budget had five paraprofessionals being reduced. Today, it's one, and that position will be eliminated based upon attrition. We have had a number of paraprofessional resignations, as we do every year. The maintenance craftsman actually was cut last year, and we're making sure that it stays a cut this year. There is no one in that position right now. Various other, the PANS stipend, I wrote the PANS program when I was here in 2011 and got the PANS program approved by the school committee. I hired its director, the same director who is there today, and he hired the two teachers who have been on board since. We are cutting the equivalent of one teaching position. That's the night program, by the way, for those of you who don't know, for students who don't make it very well at the high school. We have a couple of alternative programs. This is one of them. It's the smaller one of the two programs that we have. And at this point, we are not justifying two teachers due to the numbers that we have typically in the PANS program, but I know that Ms. Murtagh, as superintendent, will look at this again in November and talk with the director to make certain that we were thinking right. If we're not, Ms. Murtagh will come back to this board and ask for that position to be restored. Now, it's only a $17,000 position, and I know that you might think that that's a small amount of money, but it all does add up when you have to get to a balanced budget, and we were looking for $6.2 million to reassign because of the increases that we have driving the budget. There are some clerical positions that will be reduced. There is one clerical position that will be eliminated. And up top, which are non-teaching positions, or non-clerical positions, non-personnel positions, those reductions, for example, in supplies, I'm cutting $500,000. $500,000 is the equivalent of eight teachers. Now, I'm cutting $500,000, not because we don't value supplies, but because we value teaching positions more. It's a $1.3 million budget line. We will have $800,000 in supplies, and nobody will go with what, without what they need. I am also asking my principals, who are very good at hoarding, they have supplies, to share. There are some buildings that have more supplies than others, and we talked about that at a recent administrative meeting, and my principals immediately started saying, if you need ink, if you need paper, there are things in the schools that we can do better with for one year. That line item has been healthy ever since I've been here. It can stand a one-year reduction. We have to add by contract a new cluster at the Higgins. Mr. Busey has been extremely creative in being able to handle two of the teachers that are needed in the budget without impacting our budget, and we will fund two new teachers to complete that cluster. That is by contract, teacher's contract. We have a large fifth grade coming in and a small eighth grade going out. By contract, we would go over the numbers if we didn't add a cluster. That is allowed in the contract, so we have to foot that bill, and that's $140,000. For any of you who either teach at the Brown or know of the Brown, you know how complex the Brown School is. It's an extraordinarily complex building. We are also losing a longtime veteran principal to retirement in that building, so we'll be hiring a new principal. It is time, and we've talked about this before at this table, to hire a full-time assistant principal instead of a part-time assistant principal. The total cost will be about $65,000, because we already have half of that money budgeted. We need that position. We've needed it for some time. The programs that are in that building are the most challenging and difficult programs in the school district. It's time to invest in a full-time assistant principal. We have a grant rollover of $50,000 that is helping to offset this budget. We have a kindergarten grant that we're hoping will pass the state legislature. Much to the, many thanks to Andrew Arnotis and Representative Tom Walsh, who asked me what I needed. I drew it up, and we believe that it stands a good chance at passing. We're hoping for that, and I know that Tom and our other, Teddy Spiliotis and Joan Lovely are working on this all the time to make sure that we get this $100,000. Some of you may remember about 10 or 15 years ago, we had kindergarten reduction, class reduction grants, and we could hire new kindergarten teachers every year in order to keep class sizes down. They went away, as state grants do. This grant was written specifically for PBD, and we're hoping that we get that grant. Special Ed circuit breaker, again, due to the good work of our representatives and our state senator, Andrew, through his office, have supported an increase in special Ed circuit breaker. That means that after a certain amount of money that we spend on a student, we receive reimbursement for a certain percentage of that cost. We believe that with the new percentage that the state is talking about, that we will gain $200,000 from what we projected. Taking the offsets, taking the hires, which are extremely limited, and taking the reductions, we have got to the budget number of $6.2 million, which will still be an increase of almost $2 million from what we're working with now. Again, the biggest budget drivers this year, going into next year, would be special education, particularly tuitions. We had a good year the year before. We didn't have such a fortunate year this year. Health insurance, and of course, contractual raises, step and track movement, et cetera. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. I wanted to give the opportunity, we have a large crowd, if there's anyone that would like to come forward and be heard, I wanted to provide that opportunity to you now. We have the table here in front. We just ask that you introduce yourself, your name and address, and because of the large crowd, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. I'd like to try to keep it to just a couple of minutes, please. Please, come on up.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Connor, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at the Brown School. I work with children in both the Milestones Program, which is for children of low cognition, and children in the Connections Program, which is our program for children on the autism spectrum. I'm here tonight to ask for funding to reestablish some classrooms that we had at the Brown up until this year. Presently, we have a substantially separate autism spectrum disorder classroom, and this year, we implemented a new classroom model for our children on the spectrum, which is a full-inclusion co-taught model. Each grade has a classroom that is co-taught simultaneously by a regular education teacher and a special education teacher. Our children on the spectrum, who do not require the substantially separate classroom, have been integrated into these co-taught, full-inclusion classrooms, and we've seen much success with this model. However, we've also realized that there are children on the autism spectrum whose needs are not able to be met by either of these models. These children struggle to maintain self-control and attention within classrooms that demand a high level of communication and academic participation. Last year, we had classrooms that would be considered a bridge between the self-contained and the full-inclusion classrooms. It combined both small group instruction for areas of specific needs, such as academics, social-emotional development, and behavior, and also allowed for opportunities for integration into a regular classroom setting throughout their school day. Our current programs offer the extreme ends of the spectrum of need, substantially separate or full inclusion. Experience tells us that there will always be children on the autism spectrum who fall within that middle range of need. Reestablishing these classrooms will allow these children the setting they need to progress academically, socially, and behaviorally, in order to become increasingly independent. Our ultimate goal for all of these children is to be able to access the full-inclusion co-taught model. I am asking for your help in funding these classrooms, because the children who need them cannot ask you themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Mayor? Maureen?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. That was wonderfully done. A couple of questions for you. Do we have room at the Brown School to create more classrooms?
I think we do. I think that Elaine would be the one to ask, but I think that we very well may.
Second question would be, have you discussed this with Elaine and Ruthie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, and members of the school committee. My name is Patty Currie-Miss Ramstead.
of teaching and parapositions taking two days' pay away from us, which, as we all know, is a bargaining item. $500,000 in supplies, $35,000 in PD funding. I have to renew my teaching license in a year. How am I going to meet the requirement for special ed PDPs? Yes, I can go out and spend my own money for a course. However, the city is required to provide those PD opportunities. I already spend enough of my family budget on school items. Never once in 25 years have I even been given a sticker to give to a child, and that's just one example. And never once in 25 years has my husband said, "Enough." Losing teaching positions and having increased class sizes is not in the best interest of our kids. Some of them are entering school with more needs and challenges than ever before. Not only do we help them meet their academic challenges, but we love them, nurture them, guide them, and give them the support that they are yearning for in the classroom. These kids need more individualized attention, differentiated instruction, small learning groups, and social instruction. If we have larger classes, how do we support them and really give them the attention needed to be and feel successful? A few years back, I was excited to hear of a neighboring city reducing class sizes in the early grades, and I thought, "Right on, and lucky them. That's what everybody should do." How do you think teachers feel when they hear of these cuts, especially our newer teachers? I know that feeling, because years ago, that was what we were faced with every year at budget time, and we would attend these meetings like this and fight for jobs. It is a feeling of stress, anxiety, worry, whether there will be a position or not. It has been a welcome relief when we didn't have these threats for a few years, and now we're back there. It has been told to us that it's only for this year. Mm-hmm. And we will get those two days' payback, right? I think not. I wonder if the city is trying to balance the cost of getting the water treatment plant back online and on our backs. Proposing to take two days' pay away from teachers is not the way to balance a school budget. By telling us that if we do not accept that, 10 additional teachers will be laid off, feels and sounds extremely disrespectful of our contract and us, just like the calendar changes did a few years back. I would like to ask Mayor Betancourt why the city's rainy day fund cannot be used to meet this deficit. I read in the Salem News, and I'm hoping it's accurate, how it was used for the fire department's overtime in the amount of $450,000. I also have a quote here from the Salem News article of May 8th, where Mayor Betancourt is talking about the water plant, and he states, and I quote, "Our stabilization has been untouched for several decades, and now I believe we have finally had our rainy day, and it is time to use this reserve." Decades, imagine the amount that must be in that fund. This city has one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Massachusetts. I realize it has been raised a bit in recent years, and that we do have a large elderly population that we need to consider. The days of a level tax rate for years and years are over. I, for one, am tired of the lack of respect we receive as teachers. For years and years, we would wait and wait and wait for a contract proposal, sometimes two, three years without a new contract, and we would start our day, our school year, at the Elks Hall or the AOH, so that we could talk about this. I ask you, are the police and fire taking a cut in their pay? I respectfully request that this committee and our mayor look at that rainy day fund for a viable solution to this issue. It's time to respect the talented professionals this city has in the front lines with our kids each day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come forward, please? Just ask to make sure you speak into the mic, please. Welcome, Mr. Odessa.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Odessa. I reside at 26 Baudet Street here in Peabody. Good to see you all again. I find that I end up in these larger school committee meetings where there are very serious consequences on the line and very serious terms at stake. You know, I hear the talk about a correction to a newspaper article and the money being redistributed, not necessarily lost. When you say that all these positions that are being cut, the majority of these positions being cut, are cut due to attrition, where we're not hiring these positions back, that doesn't mean there's not that need. That doesn't mean that need still doesn't exist. You talk about the supplies, which is another huge issue for me and for the teachers that I know that work day-to-day with my kids and many others. That's boots on the ground, that's days in the classroom, that's where the real contact is made, that's where the real difference in growth is made. For those of you in here that don't know me, I've been an educator, a science teacher, curriculum coordinator, school administrator for a decade. I'm no longer in education, I'm a business owner now, but I do have two children myself in the school district and another one who's going to begin within a year, similar to Mr. Betancourt here. When we start to play around with classroom sizes because of some of this attrition now, because we're losing some of these positions, you're saying that some of the census is shifting. We don't need maybe necessarily as many of these positions as we have right now, but what's to account for all of the people that continue to move into Peabody? I know that there are now housing developments that we're talking about at the city level in South Peabody and other places. You know, accounting for those things, I understand we go year to year here, but there needs to be some forethought, there needs to be some foresight that really hasn't been given. You know, we talk about other things that have happened in the past, we can't change them, we can't go back on a 35-year bond to a technical school, that money that could have been spent here in our own public district to work on our vocational programs. You know, these teachers that bleed to teach our kids, you know, these teachers that come to school sicker than most kids that we keep home so that they can continue to be in the classroom with our kids. They kill themselves every single day to make sure that our kids get the very best of themselves. And this is not just this year, this is, you just heard, 25 years' worth of this going on, day in and day out. You know, there are other ways, other means by which we could have made some changes to save some money in this district, starting at the very top of our administration. There are ways that we could have and continue to have opportunity to bring revenue into this city with what's going on with our Main Street downtown, other business opportunities, and opportunities out on Route 1 that, and I know we have at least two city councils in this room, that I'd like them to hear and take notice as well, so that they can bring this back to the council. We need to start to do things here to bring revenue in. You can only stretch a rubber band so much. You continue to, I mean, these teachers in the classroom, they're here to support our kids, to give the supports that our kids need day in and day out. And they do come out of pocket almost every day to make sure that our kids have what they need. So now you take those things away, you continue to stretch this rubber band, eventually we're going to lose these great people that commit themselves every day to our kids, to your kids, to your kids, to your kids. This is a serious issue here, because now you're going to have very experienced teachers, very positive teachers, very significant role models in our children's lives, looking to find something better. And there are districts around us where there are better opportunities for teachers. You know, we've gone through multiple failed searches for a superintendent in the past. We've spent money on that that could have been reeled back in that we didn't really need to do. We've got our superintendent right here, she's been here for years. You know, why are we wasting money on those types of things and not putting them into places like this? So again, some forethought, some foresight where we go from here. Like I said, these teachers are here to support our children, to provide the supports that they need. Some of those things are going to be stripped away from them. Less professional development, less supplies to teach our kids, larger class sizes. When you take away those things that they need, that our teachers need to support our kids, then the kids aren't going to have the supports that they're going to need either. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify on the class sizes, I have the exact class sizes projected for next year in each classroom in every school at the elementary level, including the reduction of the 10 positions. And I think you'll find that they're some of the best, if not the best, in the entire region. So I'm going to post these on the website, the school website, and I'll ask the mayor to post it on his website as well. But if you'd like, anybody would like me to read them to you after this public hearing, I'd be glad to do so.
And I did want to mention, because Mr. Odessa raised some good points, but I did want to state that in the superintendent search, we did not spend money on the superintendent search. We only spent money when we got a candidate that we hired. So our previous search, in which we didn't hire somebody, there was not $1 spent on that search. When we did the second search and hired Kara Murtagh, there was a fee that went to the Mass Association of School Committees. So there was no money spent on earlier searches, it was just the one. But I did want to make sure this stated, because there was no money spent that affected this budget because of any earlier searches. Mrs. Bugler, welcome. Could you please introduce yourself?
Okay, Dorothea Kaczynski, 8 Coleman Street, Peabody, and I've been with the system for 49 years.
And you were just awarded the Peabody Legacy Award the other evening for that, and again, I wanted to congratulate you on your career.
Thank you so much.
It's been amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I want to first start out by saying how much I appreciate each and every one of you, because I know what you're doing is not easy, and I certainly wouldn't want to try. The thing is, I'm not as eloquent as the other people that have spoken, but I just want to say that I am concerned about the staff development cuts. And what bothers me is we have so many new teachers coming in. I mean, I'm on my way out, that's fine, you know, but we have a lot of new teachers coming in that really need the guidance and the help from, you know, the school department. A lot of these people are just starting out. They don't have a lot of cash, they might be married, young children, and they have to go out and try to find staff development in order to renew their license. It isn't like, you know, we were supposedly had a license for life when we originally started, but they have to go out and they have to renew this. They have to pay money, they have to find babysitters for their children, and, you know, and then on top of that, they're basically losing two days' pay by this cut. And two days' pay, on the average, would end up like 1%. Now, I don't know if the, you know, not that I'm saying anything about the police or the fire, should they, you know, I think they should get everything they do, because they're wonderful. But I'm concerned that, you know, if they're not paying this 2%, you know, if they're not losing 1% of their pay and they're getting a raise, then that kind of puts the teachers backwards. So I'm saying, you know, like, I really would like to see that the staff development not be cut, and that, you know, to provide for the young teachers coming in, and to also give us an opportunity to keep on par with the other unions in the city. And I thank you all very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a quick clarification, and thank you, Dot. Well said. There are still pockets of money for staff development. For example, one of the things that we belong to is the Salem State Collaborative, which actually comes here to the middle school to provide a great deal of professional development, almost all free, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? To our teachers, because we spend the money to belong. Some of you in this room may have taken advantage of that Salem State Collaborative here, but we've belonged to that for two or three years?
No.
I think three years. I think this is going on three years, and we will continue that investment. So we haven't cut back on that, and that still does provide a great deal of professional development for our teachers right here on site through Salem State.
Good evening. Jessica DGN-Fleese, 21 Clark Road. I'm a Peabody resident, lifetime Peabody resident. My kids go to Peabody Public Schools, and this is my 21st year teaching at a high school. I just wanted to make clear, the mayor had mentioned a 2% raise for teachers. If we are, however, going to lose pay because of those professional development days that are being taken away, that won't be 2%. I do also want to clarify that people like Dot Kaczynski, who are looking to retire next year, are going to lose money every year for the rest of their lives because of that decrease in pay. There is that potential, and that needs to be considered as well. I understand we have budgets, I most certainly do. I know that any money I lose is going to be money my family doesn't have. I am going to have to tell my children they can't have something or they can't do something. And quite frankly, I'm getting tired of having to tell my family they have to make sacrifices because I've chosen to be a teacher. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to come forward?
I guess I'm last. I'm Kristy DiLoreto, and I live at 12 Esquire Drive. I have three students in the district, well, two, yeah, I guess three, one at Carroll, one at Higgins, and one who is now at Essex Tech. I just wanted to come up here, I just, in listening and seeing all of the teachers here, and mostly teachers here, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to sit here as a parent and just listen to some of the, you know, the way that you're kind of balancing some of the changes that you're going to make with this. It's hard to sit here and say, "Well, we had a fire, so we need to take some money from the budget of education to be able to put money towards that fire." I can't, I can't make that connection, it's difficult to see, there's got to be somewhere else. I'm sitting here saying to myself, "There's nowhere else to pull the money from to be able to put that towards, you know, that fire so that we can save the education piece." You know, it's, the supplies, I, my son is 15, I've gone through this, I'm very friendly with a lot of these teachers. They don't make enough money, in my opinion, as it is, but then to be able to say, and I've watched them, I mean, I have a child with allergies, and I've seen, like, food coming in and tried to help them as much as I can, but to see them struggle to be able to provide, and they do, I mean, they fund all of this stuff, they come in with folders, they've got their little, you know, the little containers with all of their names on it, none of that's being funded. And like Mrs. Ramstein said, you know, she's, she provides her own stickers. I mean, that's, it was kind of poignant to me to hear that, a sticker. I mean, I remember being in school and getting the star sticker, and I always assumed teachers were provided this stuff, and they're not. And I just, I just feel like we need to take a step back and kind of look at the big picture and figure out what is important. Where can we come up with the money? Like Brian Odessa said, there has to be somewhere else that we can find this. And I don't envy your jobs at all, this is hard, and I know that you all have kids and it's hard. But there just has to be some other way so that the teachers that are sitting here aren't looking for another profession. We have school shootings every single week, 22 so far, and it's May. I mean, there's kids with mental illness that are going on address, we cannot reduce the number of teachers that are teaching special education, because when these kids get to high school, what's going to happen? They got lost in the system. And where is that going to trickle down to? And this makes me upset, because I just feel like, you know, we've got these kids at the high school level, and they're shooting schools and classmates, and you watch the news and you say, "We knew this was going to happen. We saw this. We saw this kid struggling all these years, and we knew it was going to happen, but we didn't have the means to help them." So I would just say, if you can, if there's any other place that you can pull the money from, $500,000 isn't a lot in the grand scheme of things for supplies, and it seems kind of crazy to start picking these things apart, but these teachers are giving everything they have. I mean, my kids are their kids, and they would stand in front of them to take a bullet for these kids, and I think that we need to do the same for them. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
How's it going? I'm Dan Walsh. I live at 397A Lowell Street in Peabody. How's it going, Jared? Went to school with Jared, good guy. Wish him well in his next job there. I have two students who are both enrolled at the Carroll School right now, phenomenal school. Both my kids also went to preschool at the McCarthy School, awesome school. I don't think, and we've heard from lots of people, I don't think anyone thinks you guys have a good job, or an easy job. We know it's necessary. Sorry. But here's the thing, I heard a lot of back patting earlier about how much you guys have done and how much you guys have added. Those are things you're supposed to do. Those aren't things that you're like, "Hey, look, we added a resource officer. Hey, we did this, no one did that before us." That's stuff you're supposed to do. That's stuff that, we live in the best country in the world, supposedly. You know, you guys are supposed to give that to our kids. You know, when I didn't have kids... Went to school with Jared, good guy. Wish him well in his next job there. I have two students who are both enrolled at the Carroll School right now, phenomenal school. Both my kids also went to preschool at the McCarthy School, awesome school. I don't think, and we've heard from lots of people, I don't think anyone thinks you guys have a good job or an easy job. We know it's necessary. Sorry. But here's the thing, I heard a lot of back patting earlier about how much you guys have, have done and how much you guys have added. Those are things you're supposed to do. Those aren't things that you're like, hey, look, we added a resource officer, hey, we, we did this, no one did that before us. That's stuff you're supposed to do. That's stuff that, we live in the best country in the world, supposedly, you know, you guys are supposed to give that to our kids. You know, when I didn't have kids, I looked at all the areas around here and I said to myself, all right, where can I afford to live, what has a decent school system, who has low taxes? I said, okay, Peabody, that's cool, let's go there. And for the most part, it's been a really great town for my kids, but I do fear that it's no longer going to be a good educational system for my kids. You know, when we hear Kristy and Brian and every teacher in here, I'm sure, there's a lot of teachers, how many of you guys actually bring stuff in for your classes? Can I see some hands? How can you say that you're providing everything that they need for their classes? You see the hands? And this isn't like, hey, I brought in a drone to show my kids, like, no, no, no. They're bringing in stickers, they're bringing in books. Sometimes they're bringing in socks and underwear for kids who don't have enough. You know, you guys talk about, you know, going to the state and getting grants and stuff, and then you talk about, okay, we're, we're not going to eliminate jobs, we're just going through, what's the word? Thank you, attrition. So no one will be affected, no teachers will be affected. The kids will be affected because now you're going to have that many less positions to monitor, to educate, and to help grow these kids. You know, you can't, it takes a village, but the village is shrinking, you know? And, you know, we watch these guys all the time, you know, and they come in on their days off and they, you know, they come in at night, and my dad was a teacher for forty-two years in Wakefield, my whole family, our teachers. I went to school for education, and, and I'll say it right now, I'm not as brave as you guys were.[724.13][724.13](LAUGHTER) And there's a reason for that. I went to do my student teaching, and I said, you know what? It's not the kids that, you know, I don't want to fight for my job from day one. I made that choice for myself, you know, but these people here, they were selfless. They decided, no, I'm going to fight for your kids, you know? I think that, you know, again, the back patting of, you know, we've done all this stuff for you guys, you should, you should take note of it, that's your job. I go to work. Nobody says, hey, good job for showing up.[766.01][766.01](LAUGHTER) You know, it's true, though, it's true. You're not, you're not, you go above and beyond and I'll tell you a good job, but do what you're supposed to do? Not so much, you know? I just, you know, when you talk about positions, I think you should, you should change that word and say people, because I think that if you say people, then, I don't know, maybe you'll find that money somewhere else. Maybe we don't have to have so many pop-up pubs, and trust me, I like them.[800.11][800.11](LAUGHTER) I do. I think they're great, I think what the city has been doing to revitalize and get the community together, I think it's phenomenal. But you never hear of anybody cutting those kind of things and giving it back to the school. We hear a lot about the grants you guys apply for, but that comes from the state. What do you guys, when you have a surplus, when are you giving it back to the schools? You know what I mean? You guys, you guys have unexpected expenditures. Guess what? We're all adults, we all have unexpected expenditures, you know, but the fact of the matter is, is that when you don't and you have a surplus, it never comes back to the So, anyway, I think, I'm just going to ask for a show of hands one more time. Again, I know you guys have a tough job, but the fact of the matter is, is a lot of people in here, I think, would like to see you go above and beyond and do better. I would. I don't know if anyone else would, but, you know, the thing is, is that we need you guys to. We don't need you to do this, we don't need you to do your job, we need you to do above your job because that's what you're asking these guys to do. You're asking these guys to do above their job. Not only are they supposed to educate, but they're supposed to pamper, they're supposed to be therapists, they're supposed to clothe your kids, they're supposed to feed your kids, you know? Time to clothe them and feed them. Thank you.[899.23][899.23](APPLAUSE)
This is very intimidating. Hi, my name's Tiara Mason, I live on 46 Hampshire Road in Peabody. My husband and I are both, sorry, this is very intimidating. My, sorry, my husband and I both work at the Peabody Schools. We have two small children, we have one in the little tanners, and we have one in daycare. Cutting those days for us, we spent pre-children years investing in our education, so that $800 hit is actually 1,600 plus for my family. That's our mortgage. It's just something, it's not just affecting one family, it's affecting all, and it's affecting mine in a big way.[961.23][961.23](APPLAUSE)
I live in Lynn, 281 Western Ave. I've been teaching at Peabody High School for twenty-five years now, and I would like to say that I have enjoyed educating all of your students, all the students of Peabody, very much over the years, but I truly hate the fact that we have to fight every single time to get what we need. We are not treated as educated professionals a lot of the time. We seem to take the biggest hits. I bring stuff in all the time for my classes. Yes, we have a supply budget, yes, we maximize it, but I bring in things all the time. My kids get stickers at the high school, they love it. I want to feel respected. I want a teacher to feel respected in Peabody, show us that you support us and you understand that we are trying the best we can. I feel like we're almost taken for granted that teachers just do it because they love the kids, which we do, they love their job, which we do, but I feel like it is taken for granted that we will do it no matter what. You give us a box, you give us a stick, we will teach your kids. But we deserve more, we deserve supplies. I can't believe the supply budget is going to get cut. My stapler broke this year. Now, yes, I've been teaching for twenty-five years, I've had several staplers from the city of Peabody over twenty-five years, but they break, they fall, they break. Ask me how many staplers I have bought for my class.[1084.01][1084.01](LAUGHTER) Over twenty-five years, I, it's a lot, I mean, it's more than I've been given by the city, sorry. It's more than I've been given by the city. I have, I have bought staplers. I just, I'm so tired of this. Can't we just get the money we need, knowing that a lot of us, all of us now, need our masters, they have to pay for their masters, a lot of my colleagues are still in school getting their master's degrees while they're teaching, young families, they're still paying off student loans from undergraduate, never mind graduate. Help us out, find the money. Education expenses are going up, all our expenses are going up. I have a house, I have a family, expenses go up, milk goes up, gas goes up. Those are things you have to have, you have to find the money. Stop taking money from the educators. Thank you.[1144.92][1144.92](APPLAUSE)
Is anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Good evening. I'm an eleven-year veteran at the high school. As an eleven-year veteran, I'm now the newest or second newest English teacher because we've already lost 20% of our staff in the English department due to attrition. Last year, I was already sent down to the middle school.
Can you please just state your name?
Justin McLean. As a result of me moving to the middle school last year, a friend of mine was fired to make room for my position. The other teacher who was sent down bounced another, another teacher who ended up, I think, working in Beverly, not that it matters. But I just, I guess I just had a couple of questions. Number one, are we, we're making the comments after we've already voted on the, on the budget as it stands?
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, okay, well then, forgive my ignorance. And then I guess my, my, my second question is, with the high school being a Level III school now, with the potential to drop farther, what stipulations in the budget will allow us to climb back now that the teachers are being asked to do more to assist in raising our at-risk students back to the level they need to be for us to be back at Level II? Thank you.[1231.13][1231.13](APPLAUSE)
Hello, my good friends. My name's Melissa Silveraghi-Morangs. I think I'm the perfect follow-up to my colleague because I don't live in Peabody anymore. You want to know why? Because I can't afford a house here because I teach at the high school. I can afford a house in Lawrence. You want to know why? Because their school system was taken over by the government, so all of their homes cost way less. In fact, my realtor told me that my four-bedroom, two-bathroom Dutch Colonial in Lawrence would cost almost a million dollars in Peabody, and it was less than 300,000 in Lawrence. So I don't know a lot about business, but I feel like the equity of some of our homes is also going to go down if our school systems decline, okay? My kids are going to school here, my kids are the most important thing in my life. I keep taking from them to give to you guys as kids. I'm always taking from my own children, and I don't think twice about it because my students are like my little siblings. I would do anything for them, I would get in front of a bullet for them, I would. But I am surrounded by these geniuses, they are masters in their craft. You force us to be, but we enthusiastically take that on. And I am surrounded by colleagues who would do anything for your children, but I bet you they'd get paid doing something else somewhere else, but it would not be as rewarding. It would not be a job that you wake up and look forward to every day. It is not work in that high school. But I am so tired of being the art teacher so one of us is going to get cut. The supplies, we need those, you know that. I can't do it anymore, I can't pay for it anymore. You're going to be so impressed by the stuff at the art show tomorrow between six and eight at the high school.[1341.63][1341.63](LAUGHTER) But all of that stuff costs money, it's not free, and I don't have it anymore, I don't have the, the financial means, the energy, and my, my passion, it's dwindling, it's not getting easier. I'm nervous because my friend is right, pretty soon that high school is going to be at a level that we cannot, we're not going to be able to recuperate from, and it'll be my kids that I'll have to choose to send somewhere else, and I don't want them in a different school system. I am Peabody's best, I went to school here. I went to Monstra in Beverly, I came right back and taught right after that in the same high school I graduated from for a reason. I could have gone anywhere. I graduated with my master's 4.0 from Salem State, I went right back to Peabody High for a reason. I love it there. Make it easier for us, please, make it easier for us. We reward you every day, we'll continue to do so. Once you give us what we need, watch, just watch what we are capable of, just watch.[1394.51][1394.51](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody else would like to?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, and other distinguished committee folks. My name is Pamela Millman, and I live in Peabody, 135 Lynn Street, and I have two children in the Peabody Public School system, and I'm proud to say that they're doing very, very well and have wonderful teachers that support them, and not just teachers, but other support staff. I just wanted to kind of put out some questions there, how you balance some of these things with the budget cuts, and I'm, few of them just to mention. When you talk about cutting supplies, you've recently added a project-based learning program with the science curriculum, is my understanding. Where are the supplies going to come from to continue the curriculum that you spent money on? You're going to be bringing in a social studies curriculum. I can't say enough how important I personally think a social studies curriculum is in our schools and what we're lacking in cultural education that I think often leads to social skills missteps in lots of ways. What kind of learning and supplies are not going to be provided when the curriculum is brought in? What's going to happen there? And what are the teachers going to have to dig into their own pockets for when we look at making better and richer curriculum that most often is related to project-based learning and things they need and not just textbook, not just a Chromebook? When you say a lot of positions, and I, whoever it was that said, talk about them as people, that are going away due to attrition, so they're just not being filled, how do we make sense of that? Why aren't we looking at what other things and what that position could be in a person to beef up another program? One school adjustment counselor per building is fantastic, it's clearly not enough with what's happening in our communities, this one and around. We need more, they need support, the teachers need support, the school adjustment counselors need support, they need professional development in things we're dealing with that we have never dealt with in our society before, such as these horrible events happening around our, our world. We need more in supporting our students and their skills, we need more to support the teachers in efforts to do that, we need more to support the rise in numbers of children on the autism spectrum that need these people. They need speech and language pathologists. We can't just say one's enough, we need to look at how to add two more. We can't say one school adjustment counselor or guidance counselor is enough, we need to add more to support the teachers in supporting the children. And if we have stronger programs with stronger people, then we're also potentially even could have an income base as another local community does and takes in other students from communities because their programs have been strengthened and the numbers have been added for people. I don't know where to find it in a budget, but when I hear things like, due to attrition, we're just not going to fill these positions, I think the question should be the other way around, or how many ways we can put in positions, because now we have not, maybe not that one, maybe we do a shift and we do something to strengthen our program and strengthen our schools. We don't want our school system to be where Lawrence is and in receivership, but I can tell you, a lot of people look at that and say, phew, at least we have support. They need the support. All of these cuts, when they seem small and minor, end up being really big for our children. I look at where my children are going to go next, and I look at that high school, and I look at the supports there, and I hear people talking, and I hear the teachers themselves talking, it's really hard to listen to. I think with all these cuts and these, we're losing it by attrition, needs to be revisited to perhaps put it in and strengthen programs so that we're then a real beacon of education on the North Shore, that people are going to want to send their kids here and want to move here.[1641.28][1641.28](APPLAUSE)
Welcome.
Hi. My name's Nicole Kenny. I don't live in Peabody, I live in Woburn. I have been teaching in Peabody Public Schools for thirteen years. I started my position here at the Burke School, but I was unfortunately moved due to the reduction in staff situation that happened a number of years ago. Currently at the Carroll School, we have 630 students, somewhere around there. Fire drills, you can really see it. We range from kindergarten to grade five. We have a tremendous amount of Title I, we have a tremendous amount of ELL, and we have a tremendous amount of students that are just barely making it to school. We clothe them, we feed them, and we make sure they are safe. We do all of this with one guidance counselor and a part-time adjustment counselor. You mentioned how the McCarthy School had to give up part of their library to house the classrooms so that the classroom sizes weren't as large. I actually got that phone call in October of this year and said, no, because I do like the Carroll School, love the Carroll School. It's crazy, there's a lot going on over there, there are kids everywhere, and there are teachers everywhere, and there are many times when people in very tall heels had to run up and down North End Street to get students, but we did it because we love our kids, and we wanted to make sure they didn't make it to Salem. Anyways, at the Carroll School, we currently no longer have a health room because it is a classroom. We no longer have an art room because it is a classroom. We are on the verge of losing our computer lab because it's going to be a classroom. We don't have a PTO room anymore because that's where ninety-some-odd ELL students are getting services in a room that was meant for storage. We have staff members giving services in the hallway. Today, we had a school psychologist administering tests for an IEP. services in a room that was meant for storage. We have staff members giving services in the hallway. Today, we had a school psychologist administering tests for an IEP for a meeting in a stairwell because there was no place else for her to go, because there is no place else for them to go. But we're going to cut teachers, and we're going to cut classrooms, and we're going to put people together. We have the crisis team at our school at least once a month. We have DCF at our school at least once a week, twice on Friday, alone. Officer Cochran is at our school every morning. One, because he likes us. We're fun. But two, because he really does need to be there, because there's a lot that goes on in that school. There's a lot that goes on in a lot of these schools. And I know that you guys have a really, really unbelievably tough job. I get that, and you have kids, little kids, big kids. Yours are way big now. And I know that you have to vote on this tonight, and I'm not naive that you guys haven't had in your head what you need to do. And I know that you not only need to look at figures for the city, you need to look at figures for the school and all of those moving pieces, and I understand that. However, when you are making that vote tonight, I think that you need to remember the faces that are behind what you're voting for, that it is retirements and, and people moving on or, or people that are, you're not hiring back. But with all of those positions, they had kids with them at one point this year, kids that needed them, and they probably need them more next year, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Hello. My name is Elias Frinoso. I live on 363 Lowell Street in PBD. I came to this country when I was eight years old, lived in Lynn for two years, and then came to PBD, and I'm proud to say that I love the education I got in PBD. But the young lady just spoke now about the ELL kids. I was an ELL kid, so I'm listening to her story, and I'm thinking, the resources that I had when I was younger, if they were taken away, I probably never would be here right now, stuttering, trying to talk to you right now because I'm so nervous. But I'm here now in front of you, and I want to say thank you to the people that are standing in front of me because they also gave me an opportunity to continue what I do, what I love to do. I met the mayor, Bittencourt. I pretended I was taking money out of the ATM machine to bump into him, to have a conversation with him about how I had to renew my license, and I was getting cut, and I got a letter in the summer, and I was doing this program that I would have my license back within a year, and he told me that we would meet with Superintendent Herbert Levine, and we were going to get it all strung out because we don't want to lose good teachers. So I believed when he said that, and I still believe him today when he says that this is a tough decision. This is something that he wants to do. But I also think about when I met with the doctor, and how he talked to me and he said, you're a PBD product, you're a PBD guy. We want to keep you here, and we want to make the best situation out of this. So if you're telling me that you can do this program in a year, we're going to stretch you out. We're going to let you keep continuing what you do. And I think about that, and I think about the opportunity he gave me to continue what I love to do. And I'm sitting here, listening to everybody talk about, we don't need the cuts, we don't need the cuts, we need the cuts, and I hope that they understand that if they would have cut me, I would not be here three years later with my master's degrees from Salem State that I finished within a year and a half and given the opportunity to be doing what I love to do. I was a history major in college, but I spoke another language. So I took that opportunity to get hired at PBD High, and I became a Spanish teacher. So I look at the opportunities that most of us have, and some of us chose a different path, probably taught a different subject, did something else, but you evolved and you turned into what you are today. But if you were not given the opportunity to continue doing what you're doing, some of us wouldn't be here today. I think about what the young lady said about the Carroll School, and it touches me because I would not be here today. This is the greatest country in the world, and I'm telling you that the situation that I came from and the situation that I went into, completely different. I got the opportunity to do something that I love to do. I get to educate kids every single day. I get to teach them the wonderful language of Spanish every single day, talk to them about my culture, talk to them about where I came from, talk about how everything is different and how we can come together here and talk about it. This is the greatest place in the world, and I just want them to understand that if you did not give me the opportunity, and if I didn't pretend that I was getting money at the ATM, we would not be here today. So I hope that, as much as we're, you know, laughing about this, I hope that some people understand how serious this is. We are in a position to educate kids. My son is six years old. He goes to the center school. My daughter is three years old. She's in the Little Tanners. I don't want to leave this city. I've been here for about 33 years. I'm 41 years old. I know I look great, but I'm 41 years old. I also want to say that we need to understand how serious this is, and I hope that when you vote, you vote with your conscience, and we will accept it because that's how things are. We have a process. We vote on things. I'm just appealing to your better nature. I love what I do. These people here love what they do. I could, I have to go buy milk after this, but I love what I do, and I just wanted to say that before I leave, that we have an opportunity to be better than we are right now. Are we going to just stick with the bottom line and just vote on numbers, or are we going to vote for something that we don't see that could possibly be? My coach always said it, if you can dream it, you can do it, but you have to believe it. I believe that we can be better tomorrow, but I don't know if the money that we're allocating for this right now is going to do it. I'm not a budget guy. My wife does all the budgets in our house, but I know one thing. We have to understand what we're voting on, and you're voting on us. You gave me an opportunity, and I turned into something. I don't know if I'm getting you the return that you wanted, but I think I'm doing a pretty good job. These people are asking for the same thing, so I hope we understand that. We just want to do better, but we need the opportunity to do that. So por favor, dano la oportunidad, hacer esto. Muchas gracias.
Hello. My name is Barbara Marsden. I teach first grade at the Carroll School. I do not live in PBD. I live in Tewksbury. I have a 45-minute commute after I leave here. I've not yet gone home today because it's not worth it to me to drive all the way to Tewksbury and then drive all the way back. I also now work a second job after school in the FKO program because the money I make as a teacher doesn't pay for all of the bills that I have. I have four children, and three of them are in college this year, so I've had to take on a second job, which is lucky for me because it's FKO and it's right at the school. I have a sister who's a nurse at the Mass General. When I first went back to school to college, I started going to be a nurse, and when I read that first book about hemorrhoids looking like a bunch of grapes, that just wasn't the job for me. So I went to my first love, which was always teaching, and when I got back into teaching, I'm so thankful to the town of PBD for hiring me. I've loved every year that I've worked here, and I, and I am thankful that I have the job that I have. My sister did go on to be a nurse, and she works in the Mass General, and she says, oh, I got to go in and work a 12-hour shift. And I'm like, what's it like to work 12 hours and get paid for all 12 of them? Because I work 12 hours pretty much every day at the school, and if you drive by any one of the schools in this town, you'll see that there's cars there anytime from 7:00 o'clock on. Our school doesn't start till 9:00. I'm in by 7:30, which if I live 45 minutes away, I'm leaving my house at 6:30-ish to get here. But we all work so much unpaid overtime, and when we leave at the end of a 12-hour day, how many of you would take and work home with you every night and doing it? How many of you are working a second job to help pay for what your livelihood, to pay your mortgage and to pay your three kids in college at the same time? I'm just asking that you don't cut, if you cut $800, that's, that's about what I take home in a week. That's a whole week's take-home pay for me after taxes and after medical insurance and retirement and union and all the, you know, everything that's already taken out of our pays. I'm just pleading with you when you make this choice. As somebody said, we're people, and we're people that are working second jobs. Some of us, third jobs. I'm going to be working all summer. I'm not having the summer off. I have to work all summer. How many people are working this summer? We're trying to make our ends meet, and we're thankful for the job we have, and we're thankful for the support we have, but we're just asking you to keep supporting us and keep thinking that, as somebody said, we're people, and as everybody said, we're all spending our own money in our classrooms. If the police work overtime or the firemen are working overtime, they're getting paid for it, and you're getting such a bargain because we're all working so much overtime that you're not paying us for. We're working it for free now. We can't keep giving our time and our money and our time away from our families and not be respected for that and not be compensated for that. I'm leaving here tonight with a bag full of, of stuff I have to take home and correct. I probably won't get to bed till after midnight, and then I'll be up at 5:00 to get in my car at 6:00 to get, to get here on time. And I'll be here, and I'll have a smile on my face, and I'll deal with those 22 little first graders, and we'll have a great old day. But I just, please, like, we're people. We're, we're not just a number in a, in a line item budget. There's, there's got to be money somewhere. If the police work overtime, you find the money to pay them. They're standing at, doing a detail. I'm not trying to bash the police. I'm not. Everybody does their jobs, and everybody's jobs are important. But if you're standing there directing traffic on a detail and you're getting overtime for it, and we're in classrooms with 23, 24, 25, six-year-olds, anybody want to come and do it for a day? You'll see that we're earning our keep here, and so we don't deserve to have anything cut, whether it's supplies or $800 or professional development. I'm just pleading with you to really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lori Coleman. I live at 578 Lowell Street. I had no intention of stepping up here tonight whatsoever. Sorry, hon. To hear that a child was getting tested in a stairwell at the Carroll School, I have a child. I have two children. I have a 21-year-old, almost 22, who's going to be aging out of the special ed program, and a six-year-old going on 24 at the center. My daughter went through all that testing, and if I had ever found out that she was tested in a stairwell by anybody, a school psychologist, anybody, I would have been livid, and you all would have, you all would have known who I was. Trust me. That is absolutely abhorrent to me. I look around the room. I, my daughter went to the Carroll, the Welch, Higgins, the high school. I can't even tell you how many of you had her. I need to tell you, you need to do something to find the money somewhere else. She was in the special ed program from the age of three all the way up. So many of the teachers in this room made such a huge difference in her life, and it wasn't because they had a budget to do so. It was because they're wonderful, caring human beings, and to hear that they're taking away from their own families because they're buying supplies. I know that I send supplies into the center, the center school all the time. My husband and I are on the PTO at the center school because we care about what's going on in the school system. My daughter just took a college age, a college class at North Shore. No special ed, no supports, nothing. Struggled like you wouldn't believe, but she passed it with an A minus. That is not something that she ever could have done without the likes of Elaine Metropolis, Mrs. Byrne, Melissa. I, I can't, there's a million of you, and I'm sorry, I can't name you all. But to me, that speaks volumes, that you need to find somewhere else. Don't be cutting funding in the budget here, supplies, any of that. There's got to be something else that you can come up with. Take a little from here, a little from here, a little from here. There's got to be something because my child, all these other people's children, they're more important, and they're worth it. To know that my kid struggled her entire life in school and came home to tell me she got an A minus in a class that typical peers were taking, and she didn't have, you know, one-on-one tutoring or anything like that. She had no accommodations whatsoever, and that's because she went to the PBD public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else would like to, please?
Hello. My name's Heather Pollack, and I'm a teacher at the Carroll School. Excuse my hat. I just came from my second job. I'm a spin instructor, and I do that so I can provide extra supplies for my students because they are my children, and I can speak for every one of my fellow colleagues. They think of every one of their students as their own child, and I left corporate America. I was in sales because I wanted to pursue my passion for education, and I believe education goes beyond the curriculum. You have to think about compassion, and when I look at a student that doesn't have crayons, doesn't have a jacket, doesn't have mittens, how can I say no to that child? I will find a way, and I know that all my colleagues will also find a way, and they do, through extra jobs. I'm even selling my clothes on this website called Poshmark to provide extra for my students, and it just breaks my heart to think that, I think the, the atmosphere and our morale will kind of be crushed if we don't have the support behind us to provide our students with the tools that they need to truly succeed. And it also takes away from a teacher. If I'm working three jobs, it takes away from my planning and from my passion, you know, in the classroom. So I beg you, please, to reconsider and think about the benefit of the children. I don't know if I said this at the beginning, but I went through the PBD public school system myself, and I'm proud that I'm a PBD graduate. I loved my experience. I loved all my teachers, my first-grade teacher, Mrs. Cavino. I don't know if she's here tonight. But fond memories, and my, my teachers would do anything for me, and I know that my colleagues do their best for my, for their students, and I just wish we would have the support and reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to, to speak? Please?
My name is Katie Scarry, and I'm in my 12th year of teaching at the high school, and I am somebody who works a second job in the night school that you mentioned earlier. And I'll admit that when I took that job six, almost six years ago, I did it because I wanted to move out of my parents' house. Sorry, Mom. She's over there. She's been texting me. But I couldn't have stayed there for six years if it was just that. I'm there because those students are important. They would be part of a dropout rate if it weren't for programs like this, and they deserve a teacher. You said there are two teachers up there, but there's only one on a given night. It's basically one job split between two teachers. I'm there Mondays and Wednesdays, and Mr. Brand is there Tuesdays and Thursdays, and if we cut that, there's nobody there for those kids, and they need somebody there for them. This is a difficult group, a challenging group sometimes, and I just want you to reconsider because I think those kids deserve a teacher.
Anybody else would like to come forward?
Patty Rampstein again. I just wanted to, Mayor, when you were talking about the percentages of what the budget is reduced by, I'm totally confused. Could you give us the actual figure of what the reductions amount to?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question.
Well, I'm confused about everything that's been in the paper, what people have said, what initially came out was 4.1%. I had heard, and so you're saying that the, the newspaper was incorrect. So I was asking, or am asking, what is the actual percentage that the budget's being reduced by this year?
The budget's not being reduced this year, and the headlines in the newspaper, the one that jumped out at me was the PBD Advocate, and it said that the main line item was 6.4 being cut from school budget. So in my opening remarks, that's what I wanted to touch on because that's not accurate. This year's budget, last year's- This year's budget, last year's budget was 71,894,793. This year's proposed budget is 73,710,393. So it's actually an increase of the budget of 1.8, 1,815,000, which is about 2.7%, somewhere around there. So it's actually an increase. The issue has been because of the contractual obligations, the steps in lane, which you, which teachers have earned. Because of the health insurance, which is really crippling this year, the 9.9%, that's about $2 million to our overall budget. And the fact, special education costs and other things that are important that we have to address. But because of those costs, we've had to reallocate within the budget. So the budget's increasing. We would never decrease the budget, that's not the issue. The problem has been because of these additional costs, it's just put some strain and stress on us to account for that additional money that's required to meet our, to meet our needs. And, and that's the thing, it's particularly at the high school, the fact of the matter is the Essex Vocational School has been taking a lot of our students, which is unfortunate. I was one that did not support moving forward with the regional school. I wanted to invest in the city of PBD. And I think one of the speakers earlier that, because I thought we could do the job here. But we're spending a great deal of money, it's a terrific school, about, we had, previously it was about 10 students per year would leave the eighth grade from the Higgins and go to either the two schools, Essex Aggie or North Shore Tech. Now we have about on average 80 to 85. So that's 75 less kids that typically go into the high school. So that's why I think when we were looking at the budget and trying to make these tough decisions, we were looking at the fact that the enrollment has gone down drastically at the high school. And it's difficult and that was one we've really struggled with. So, but I wanted to make it clear that we, we would never, I would never support and I would never even propose where we would cut a budget. The schools are too important to me, you do too much valuable work. Very thoughtful, the comments that were made, I really appreciated that. But, you know, when we were looking, we thought that was a way maybe that we could take some stress off us and maybe with the high school cutting some of the teachers there just because of the fact that the enrollment has gone down so significantly. So that was it. But it, it is an actual increase, the 2.6% or so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name's Lorraine Martino Costa and I'm a nurse at the Thomas Carroll School. I live about two houses away, as all the teachers know. I grew up there. I went to the original Carroll School, had Mr. Manning, Mr. Ryan. Long story short, I am a product of PBD. My parents were immigrants, they came here, me and my sister went to PBD public schools, graduated, we have our degrees. She's off in Miami, I'm still here in PBD. I stayed. I have two little kids. Currently, I don't have them in the, in the public school system because of the issues that I feel like impacting, something like this. My child can't get the services because you're not going to have someone there all day long. Now I have private services that I get done. And yes, Dr. Levine has worked with me and Ruth Grooby. These teachers go above and beyond on a daily basis. I can't speak for the other schools because I don't rotate like I used to. But I went through tons of schools, different nationalities, different issues, different parents. I don't know how long any of you have spent sitting at any school, watching. And I don't mean that in any bad, negative way. But I would love for you to see the different populations, not just from West PBD, South PBD, all parts of PBD, Welch School. Again, the different populations and all these teachers take care of these kids and put them in a safe place. That's their only love. And I know, I understand that this is all business and numbers. But then we also should be looking at the numbers of kids that are not being addressed and taken care of if you get rid of a teacher or an adjustment counselor. It's already a shortage with these adjustment counselors. And unfortunately, they end up towards the nurse's office after because there isn't enough out there already for them. And there's a lot of traumatic experiences, I don't know if everyone's aware of them with the kids. There's a lot of impact when you're cutting any type of staff. It's not just a, oh, it's okay, we can do one less. If you don't have subs, you can't have someone coming in to take that place. That's something that has to be looked into with all of these budget cuts. That's my concern. And these teachers, that's the other concern. If they're going to be working, their morale's going to be horrendous because they're going to be worried, well, am I going to get cut next year because they have to make room for more money? So I just want you to take the kids into consideration and take the schools, the populations, because you're looking at a different population, one side of the city versus the other side of the city, and the impact that it is to take someone away or keep putting, again, Carroll School has 630 kids. I don't know the numbers at the bark, but you're looking at probably a quarter of it. And the Higgins probably has, what, 1,200 kids? 1,400.
I mean, the Carroll is the biggest school, no doubt about it. But it's not, it's not to that degree. But I...
It's when the classrooms seem to be overrun and overfilled, it's a concern that the kids aren't going to get their equal education as a class that has 15 kids in it. And as a parent, and I'm sure that's a concerning part to other parents because you, you don't have the focus to put on all 25 kids as you would with a class of 15. I know you guys had talked about possibly redistricting, I don't know if that's still an option or not, if that would do anything with the budget and...
Redistricting is something we've considered. I struggle with redistricting to be, to be open with you. When I was in school, they redistricted. And I remember when I was at the South School, they brought students over from the McCarthy and it was very difficult. And I've always had that in my mind and I really felt for some of the students. And I know that can be disruptive for families. So I, I don't take redistricting lightly and I've in fact been kind of the one delaying on that. I think ultimately we have to do some redistricting. We talked, we talked about that actually in the earlier meeting. But I have struggled with that because I know it can be very difficult for kids. Being out of school, being moved to another school and you're only one of maybe a few. So that's one I struggle with. To be, I just, it's my...
I guess I have to reiterate with the other parent, if my child is being tested in the hallway, at what point are you violating the special education? Because there is no room to actually do it in an appropriate spot. And I just put that out there, I'm not being negative against anyone, I get, we do what we can. But it's all little things that I don't know if people are aware of that go on in the schools on a day-to-day basis as opposed to a big picture of, okay, well, this is the dollar spent at this school. So it'd be nice if everyone got to see what is really being done every day on a daily basis at a school and what's being put into it, just like you guys put in all your time and effort into this role. The teachers do too. So I think it would be nice if everyone else got to see their exact roles. I know Carroll, you do what you can and you see, you worked at the Carroll before too and you're aware of everyone. So I just think that it's not something that should be taken lightly and just, it's a number. And you should look into all the other great teachers that are here. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you so much. That was a very, very powerful word, so thank you. I know it's not easy to get up and speak in front of people. I think all of us, we're appreciative of, to hear from each of you. Okay, so I think we need to open up the hearing or open up a discussion, we need to make a final vote, correct?
Yes.
I'll open it up to the committee members for any comments or questions. Committee members, any questions, comments? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank all the people that have come tonight. Many of these speeches were very powerful and have given a lot of very, very good reasons on how you feel about different issues in this budget. I do hope that many of you can understand what the mayor and superintendent said at the very beginning about making sure everyone understood what this budget process actually entailed this time. And I really do want to say that as a school committee member, it was very heartening to see this many people come out in support of education. This is honestly one of the, no, actually, I'll tell you, this is probably the biggest crowd I have ever seen at a budget hearing, ever. So thank you for coming and for speaking out.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, Mrs. Coppender?
Thank you. I too would like to thank everyone who came out this evening. The information that you've provided us will go a long way. There are many faces that I recognize in the crowd. I want to say thank you to some of those teachers in particular that have educated my children and still are. I do appreciate every single one of you. I do want to say that we do have to get these numbers to the city council. Tonight is our deadline. We do have to move forward with this budget, we do have to take a vote. With that being said, I also want everyone to understand that these budgets are very fluid. Given everything and all of the information you've provided this evening, there are and can be opportunities for some of the things that you've mentioned to change once the budget has passed. Just because of the, the way that it is so fluid. And everything that you've said will be taken into consideration. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the salary line for the FY '19 budget in the amount of $51,642,252.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion to approve the non-salary line item in the budget in the amount of $22,68,141.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the total line item budget for the FY
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing. Call in favor. We'll take a five-minute break.